Selectmen, so I guess while we're all still, most of us standing, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we normally do, first on the agenda is public comment, so I would open up to public comment, I'd ask you to keep your comments to three to four minutes, there's a sign in sheet up there, I believe, okay, we're gonna get a sign in sheet up there, please sign the sheet so we have you for under, for the record, name, address.
Laura Bates, 26 Woodbridge Road, I just wanted to come up here and give my support to the Board of Selectmen for proposing to change the name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board, I think it's time that we move into the 21st century and include everyone, and, you know, it's one of our raised values in the school system, inclusion, and I think everybody should feel welcome and part of the board, and I just wanted to come up here and say that and make sure that you knew that you had some support, thank you.
Alyssa Koenig, 20 Methuen Avenue, I also wanted to speak on the change of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, I am 100% think this is a great idea, and working to eliminate implicit bias in our town is a really great step toward overall coming to a more gender neutral society, and I really think this is a great step, and I appreciate that this is coming before the board, thank you.
Any other public comment tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move forward, I do see a member of the Booster Club here tonight, so if the Board would indulge me, I'm gonna move, I think, oh yeah, I'm gonna move, we only have two consent items, and then we have a lot of government reports, so I'm gonna use my privilege as Chair to move the consent items under public comment, so the first, we, as we normally do, we take consent items in one fell swoop now, so we've got two of them, one of us to waive the right of first refusal for an affordable unit 210, Chikara Road Unit 304A, which has come, become available, and then the second is a request for the Little League for permission to use Water Street, and normally we do allow the representative from the Little League to come in and kinda give their pitch about what they're doing, so I'm going to open that up.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it, so again, Little League, sitting in front of you again, this is the eighth year, last year was the seventh, unfortunately it was rained out due to it, so it was the one, the first time, second time, excuse me, in the seven years, so we're gonna try to do it again for Saturday, May 2nd, same venue, same streets closing, same ceremony, everything, so we're hoping with the Board's approval that-
We do need your name, you need to say your name and address.
Mark Cooperstein, 133 Colonial Ave, representing North Andover Little League, so with the approval of the Board, we hope that we can have this and have some good weather as we've been having the past couple of weeks.
Okay, and how many years have you been doing this, now the parade?
2020 will be the eighth year.
Eighth year.
So, I've only had, like I said, two rainouts, so been pretty successful, we've included the Challenger, softball, and all the other divisions in the Little League, from T-ball all the way up to the Majors, so we've had several hundred children walking and going through the opening ceremony, so it's been a great hit for the town.
It's a great event, and it's a memory maker, those kids will remember that.
Yes.
First time they wear their uniform and march through the streets of North Andover, so it's great, thank you.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
Thanks to all of you who've thought of it, it's really fun.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mark, thank you, okay, so we'll take the consent items together as a group, so all those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need a motion. I'm jumping way ahead here.
I'll say what he said.
Mark, you didn't catch me on that one. I'll have a motion.
So moved.
I'll approve, everyone of the consent items.
And second?
Second.
I guess I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, now we'll move back to government reports, first on the list is an update on the Senior Center.
Mr. Chair, would you mind taking the coronavirus community readiness out of order, just because our Public Health is here and they have a meeting at eight as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a number of items on the government reports, and item C is the update on the coronavirus, which is impacting many, many of us these days, so we have our Director of Public Health here.
And the Public Health Nurse is here as well, if you don't mind inviting her as well.
Did you end up speaking earlier today?
And just to add, our Town Clerk and our Town Moderator are both here as well, just to be a part of the conversation in case it affects any of our future elections and town meetings.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me here today, just wanted to give you guys a brief update on coronavirus, and irrelevant to North Andover, basically, I'm starting off with some basic information, just to get the information that I think is relevant out there, so you guys can hear it again, I'm sure you guys have heard a lot of it over and over again, but, so basically what is coronavirus? Coronavirus, it's a large family of viruses that infect people, animals, birds, you name it, so cats, bats, cattle, camels, et cetera, it's a respiratory virus that we caught from an animal over in Wuhan, China, it spreads from person to person, just like the flu, and it's new to people, which is kinda causing the big scare and causing the panic that the media has been sensationalizing a little bit, which causes more panic and more fear. So if you remember back to 2009, H1N1 came around, and the same type of thing happened, there was a lot of media publicity, it was very scary, there was no vaccine, it had never been seen in the human population before, which the unknown is usually the most scariest part, because you don't know how it's gonna spread and how it's gonna affect your population. So that was the avian flu way back when, this is a new coronavirus strain that has never been seen in the human population, so it's the scary, the unknown, and what's gonna happen. Other coronaviruses have come around, common cold comes around every year, that is a form of a coronavirus, SARS, which was up in Toronto back in 2003, and then MERS, which was in the Middle East back in 2012, were also coronaviruses, so the one that we have now obviously is the new one, coronavirus COVID-19, started in Wuhan, China, back in December. So as data's coming in, as reports from CDC and other countries have been gathering the information, we're seeing how it's starting to play out, right now, we have about 106,000 cases around the world, there have been 3,500 deaths associated with this particular strain, there's a lot of suspicion that a lot of milder cases are going unreported across the globe, the younger populations seem to have very mild symptoms, such as the common cold, so could be a respiratory infection, could be a cough, could be a low-grade fever, where people don't actually seek medical attention, so it's not documented, so the numbers are coming in from around the world, they're looking at the severity of it, which is affecting about 20% of the population, 80% is very mild, so that's a good thing. The fluid situation, we've been monitoring it daily, we've done a lot of team meetings in town, and as of right now, there are, there was earlier today 27 presumptive cases, which is a positive test, but not confirmed by the CDC yet, in one positive case, there have been 14 more presumptive cases announced as of about five o'clock tonight, those are all associated with the Biogen Conference in Boston.
In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts, yeah, yes, yes, so the 41 presumptive cases are in Massachusetts. People considered most risk from the COVID-19 are the elderly and immunocompromised, and that's kinda the, one of the scary parts of a new virus coming like this, so people with underlying medical conditions are at the most risk, especially if they have lung disease or anything associated with their respiratory system, luckily, children are not being affected by this particular strain, there's been very little childhood documentation of them contracting the virus and having any complications. Caroline is here with me, the Public Health Nurse, to talk about the signs and symptoms.
So what we handed out was a presentation that we did today at the Senior Center, we spoke to maybe 20 seniors who had some general concerns and questions, and so we put together a slideshow to discuss with them ways that they can prevent or protect themselves from potentially getting infected with COVID-19, we're stressing everything that we should already be doing in terms of protecting ourselves from the flu and other viruses, hand washing, and covering our coughs, sneezes, staying away from sick people, staying home if we're sick, really important things at this time of the year, especially now with this new virus circulating, we also talked about not touching your face with your unwashed hands, the average person touches their face 2,000 to 3,000 times a day, so if you are going to, you know, poke your eye or something, make sure your hands are clean, and just the proper ways of washing your hands, use the towel to turn off the faucet, open the door, that kinda thing, also just to stress that diseases can make anyone sick regardless of their race or ethnicity, and it's important that people understand that people of Asian descent or Chinese Americans are not more likely to get COVID than any other Americans, so to try to realize that we're kinda all in this together, and what we do to protect ourselves, we're also protecting other people, and in turn, they're kinda protecting us because they remain free of illness, so it kind of all comes around in full circle. We discussed the importance of, the question of the mask, do we wear it, do we not wear it, you can't find it anywhere, so basically, the difference between the two masks, so the surgical mask, the surgical mask is recommended for anyone who is ill to protect the environment, so if they are coughing and sneezing, they're not coughing and sneezing all over, you know, surfaces and whatnot, so someone who is at a hospital and needs to come out of their room, they'll put on a surgical mask, or if they need to be transported somewhere, there's also the N95 mask, which is recommended for healthcare personnel, because that will protect them when they're caring for these ill patients. We talked about different definitions, Brian went into presumptive, positive, as well as confirmed case, we do have people who have been exposed to the virus at, say, the Biogen Conference, and when they've been exposed but aren't exhibiting symptoms, they are being asked to self-quarantine, so that is an ask that, you know, the state has asked them to do, if they were a positive case, they'd be in isolation, so if they do develop symptoms while under self-quarantine, then they are to reach out to the local Board of Health, the State Department, or their healthcare physician, and get more guidance in terms of what they need to do, they would be tested in terms of, is this the flu or is this COVID-19 that they're exhibiting symptoms of, so we kinda take each situation case by case. I briefly touched upon just what the current travel alerts are for right now, in that level three countries, China, Iran, Italy, and South Korea are considered level three countries, and that all essential, non-essential travel to level three countries should be We also, and I know everyone's probably familiar with the travel recommendations, and basically, if something were to happen in our community, the state notifies us, the Health Department, and we are to follow up on a local level with the person, the resident, who is either exhibiting symptoms or is just in self-quarantine, and we check in with them on a regular basis to see if they're developing symptoms, and also, if someone is to get sick, the seniors had a lot of concerns about, well, I heard I'm not supposed to go to the doctor if I'm sick, so we had to kinda clarify that, it's not that you're not to be seen, it's that if you were exposed to a positive COVID-19 person case, or if you travel to any of the high-risk countries and are exhibiting symptoms, you are to call ahead of time, so that way the hospital, or the primary care doctor, or even the 911, like, first responders are able to dawn the appropriate protective wear, and so that's all we're saying, is that if you're having these symptoms, unfortunately, they're very similar to the flu symptoms, so it's kind of a strict criteria in terms of how you fit into the testing and what considers you a, you know, suspect of COVID-19 illness, and like Brian said, in terms of the testing, as they start to develop more testing and kinda branch out instead of this strict criteria, we may see certain percentages, mortality rates and whatnot decrease a little bit, because right now they're testing the sickest of the sick, and so as they start testing some of these mild cases, we'll kinda see those numbers shift a little bit, so.
Yeah, so on a local level, like I said, we've been meeting regularly, the emergency management teams are meeting, we also met with Lawrence General Hospital on two different occasions, they're part of our emergency team meeting, we've had conference calls with the state and the CDC, we are actually starting up weekly conference calls to get the latest and greatest guidelines, the information that they are seeing, and the trends in the data, so those calls, I have another one tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, so I will get more information out after that, we've been meeting locally with local public health and safety officials, actually, it was funny, we did a tabletop exercise back in January that the Regional Public Health Coalition started for, we call it an EID Plan, which is an Emerging Infectious Disease Plan, so it was kinda ironic that we did that in January, and COVID-19 came shortly thereafter, so we've had our plans in place, we have had our H1N1 plans from back in the day, that we've kinda revised and gone through, taken a look at, and started updating, so we did the tabletop, we've had the team meetings, I met with the school department on several occasions, we actually even got the fire department fit-tested for N95 masks, so they have protocols that are being put in place now for dispatch to ask certain questions if certain types of medical calls come in, so they now are being trained and tested for N95s, respirators, so if they get these calls, they can dawn the appropriate PVE to protect themselves while this kinda unfolds itself, and they're estimating about 12 months for a vaccine, if that's the case, and the COVID is still around in 12 months, then we will set up emergency dispensing site clinics, which we've done in the past, H1N1 was the latest example that was done, we will have those plans ready to go, and we can do that if the vaccine is appropriate at that time, so we're gonna keep monitoring the situation and keep on our emergency planning, we're gonna keep meeting regularly with the public safety officials and town officials, and kinda see how this unfolds, and go with the recommendations as to what is actually happening with the outbreak and spread of the disease, if, and there are certain things that if we meet certain thresholds, then we'll do certain protocols, such as social distancing and things like that, but that is all on a step-by-step basis, depending on what we see and how the information comes in.
Is there any options on heat, whether the warmer weather will lessen-
That's a theory, back in 2009, the novel flu strain peaked in the spring, when it first hit this area, and then the summer months came, and it waned way down, and then in the fall, it came back up again, so that is a trait of some of these viruses, but with a novel strain, you don't know how it's gonna react, and how it's gonna spread through the population, so hopefully, it takes the summer off, and we get a little reprieve from this, I would appreciate that.
And then we just have to worry about mosquitoes.
Not yet, I have some mosquito information coming around shortly.
Right, for Lawrence General Hospital, are we also communicating with Holy Family too, just because, I mean, both are pretty close and-
I have not reached out and met with Holy Family yet, Lawrence General is more in our catchment area for the most part, and Paul Brennan, who's Emergency Coordinator for Lawrence General, is on a regional subgroup with me, that, and he actually came in to help us do the fit-testing over the fire department, so I will reach out to Holy Family.
It's not that we're not, it's just that it's, we have a very long list of people we are reaching out to, like, I'm trying to get out to all the long-term care facilities, just touching base with infection control, and trying to make sure everyone's kind of on the same page.
And you're not, right, you're not the only municipality, every municipality is doing it, but that's why I didn't know if there was already, there was already the infrastructure in place for communication to happen, just because of how close, I mean, I know that Lawrence General is in our catchment area, but-
Yep.
I mean, Holy Family is two and a half minutes up that same road.
Yes.
So, and I mean-
I do, I have another, I have a second conference call in the afternoon, that is with long-term care, hospitals, and local public health, I hope to talk to somebody from Holy Family on that conference call, as somebody that I should be a stakeholder in this particular vicinity, yeah.
How, how have the responses already been at, at least Lawrence General, when it comes to like the flu season, right, are they already seeing an uptick, because there's only X number of beds available, and I'm sure they have people now, especially with that heightened awareness, that if they are sick, they're turning to that as their, their more immediate option, as opposed to maybe even prior seasons when they may have not been so quick.
They're more gearing up for it than they are actually in response right now, but I can confirm with that tomorrow.
I did happen to learn today that we do have one nursing care type of facility that is not gonna be opening their facility to events, I mean, you certainly can come and go as you please, but to events, I don't wanna say what it is that let them, I prefer that they make that public, if they choose to make that public, but as they said to me, and I think as everybody in this room knows, it's our most vulnerable population, along with those with compromised immune systems, so I, I said I totally support your, not that they were asking my permission, I said it makes sense to me, that you don't wanna be bringing the public in for an event or something, so.
And I think I would agree with that, I mean, depending on their situation, each individual facility has their own guidelines that they're gonna go off, but that is- But that is an abundance of caution, and for their population, I think, could be appropriate for what they're looking to do and who they're looking to protect.
You sound silly, but it's not necessarily health-related as much as it is like economic development, of course, but we're fortunate because of unfortunate events that we have, that economic development fund that we've leveraged for those shop-local days. Just thinking about how this, the ripple effect that this will have on our small businesses, especially, you know, our mom and pops, our restaurants, which, you know, you're already kind of hearing scary stories of restaurants literally laying people off perhaps just to get ahead of what they think will be a downturn, even if it's not something that ends up becoming a health issue. So probably worthwhile to start considering, I know that we've geared that, those dollars, right, at times around the holiday season, but we might have the ability to provide a little bit of an extra cushion to our own small businesses locally that could use it now. Not literally now, but for the situation as opposed to seven months from now. Just putting that on our radar, all of us.
Well, a lot of good information.
Yeah, thank you, Caroline and Brian, thank you. Is this posted on the website?
We will get it on there. That was just this morning that we did that.
Okay, and you'll be updating as you go, obviously, as you get more updated information, you'll be updating the website with more information for everybody.
Yeah, so we recommend people go to the most credible sources for information, which is the CDC website and the massdoc website, as well as the health department and the town's website, for the factual basis of information, not sensationalized and crazy headlines, which tend to scare people, unfortunately.
The one thing, I guess this is a question for the town manager and for you guys, so you're obviously, your board and yourselves are the most in tune to the health needs of the town. So if there was some sort of an incident or something, I would, I would feel as though that they would be sort of in charge, that we need to do this, this, and this, along with emergency management and in concert with the town manager to make a decision as to, for whatever, shut down the vent or whatever. Is that, is that what you all?
Well, in addition to that, in the schools, I mean, yeah, I think that group...
But they, but they, they are the experts. Well, of course, probably the nursing staff at the schools as well, but...
I mean, we've included them in our, in our meetings, yeah. So we would have a meeting with emergency management, with public health, with police and fire, and usually would involve someone from the CDC or the DPH, typically DPH for us, and use their recommendation as well as our experts to make a determination about any closures, et cetera.
Can I ask a silly medical question? Because I feel like I've read two different things online, so that children are not as susceptible, but they can get it, they're just not at risk of getting it severely. So they can be carriers, so they can be introducing it to in schools and the staff that we need to be...
Exactly.
Okay.
So there have been a couple of schools in Massachusetts that have closed because a parent was confirmed to have either been, I forget your language, potential case.
Presumptive.
I mean, if we, yes, thank you. If we were to find such a situation here, do we already know now that we would close the schools for a specific type of cleaning, or we don't know that, we're reserving it to judgment at that point in time?
The schools are doing the cleaning now, and they do have the electromagnetic guns that they're using.
Okay.
I haven't met with them this week yet, but I actually reached out to Gilly today to set something up for later on this week to reconnect and keep going through the protocols as new information comes out. But we have talked about school closures and what that would look like and how the scenarios would unfold. So it depends on what we see. If there's a large rate of absenteeism coming, and then some positive tests come in, because it takes a few days for the test to come back, then we would definitely take that information and make a decision quickly.
And we've done that before, correct, for neurovirus? We've had a school closure for neurovirus.
Yeah, I remember another school was closed, right, yeah.
And the state department, the state health department has an epidemiologist on call 24 hours a day. So anything that kind of comes in, we can call them and get guidance from them in a very short period of time, so.
Thanks.
This is ever-changing, really is.
Very fluid.
Brian and Caroline?
Are there things that you need from us as a health department? I mean, we talk about, we go through the whole budget discussion, right? And we talk about, you know, on our normal circumstances. But like, for right now, like, what are, what's the type of support that, that a town can provide that, you know, this is a, you know, once a decade, once a century type situation, right? Conceivably, hopefully, all of this is just, you know, not, ends up, you know, fizzling out, but...
As you were working very hard on it, so additional man-hours would be great, additional staff would be great. But, I mean, for this event, we're going to work at its best we can and do what we can to keep our job functions maintained as well as any additional work with this.
I would ask that, as we put things out there, and I think we usually use the tools of the North End of our Public News email, and not everyone follows that, I get that. So if something is shared, maybe just resharing it so people can, we can try to get as many people educated and, you know, getting the up-to-date facts. I think that's where I feel limited, when I try to put stuff out there. I don't know how, the best way to be effective and efficient in terms of getting the news out there, so.
Let's ask something. If we do get to a point where this becomes an issue and we need to have additional staffing, whether it's contractors, consultant, whatever, is that an option? Do we, do we have a contingency set up to do that? I mean, let's say this becomes something that is much larger than we expected.
We could do budget transfers so that we could bring people on to help, yes.
That's true.
You know, so we would throw all the department head support behind them, so.
But from our end, as laypeople with, following, et cetera, I mean, you would find it helpful to just rope in, I mean, do we have an idea of how many people right now already are on our communications plan, whether it's for emails, text messages?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. We do have a lot of people signed up for the emails. If we had confirmed cases or emergency information that we needed to get out, we would use the robocall system for emergency information.
I would also just say, we're linking the network out through the schools, because that connects to, you know, probably half the homes and...
Well, that's what he did last week. He tagged on our newsletter afterwards. I'm like, you have a bigger following than we do, so.
And even this, I would say, you know, Dr. Gilligan put out a statement this morning and so forth. This, because it gets to the parents, I think, would be helpful. So I might suggest looking at it in the same way, that it's not schools, you're really communicating with the parents, be it the school.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, great. Okay, all right, thank you.
So we're going to stay on this item because it is about community readiness, and our Tom moderator is here tonight to talk to us about some potential impacts to upcoming meetings.
Thank you very much. I'm delighted, thank you, for indulging me, Mark, this is Alamo 179 Coventry Lane. Delighted to see the public health authorities and staff here. It's no surprise to me that you are getting ready, and I appreciate that. I have an increasingly larger and larger portfolio, and I want to be very careful and speak particularly deliberately tonight about consequence. I was sorry first to haunt Dick and Melissa yesterday on this subject, and I'm going to ask you to allow me to reprise the conversation that I had with the chairman and a communication that I wrote to, to both town manager and to the chair. I contemplated sending the board of public health the same communication, but I demurred because it's your purview, and I was delighted particularly to hear that it was shared with staff. So thank you for that openness. Over the last several days, my role as a chair of what's called the 2040 Committee for the Massachusetts Moderators Association has brought me into some community prominence in the moderators association around this very subject, particularly around the subject of how do we conduct town meeting and the notion of having remote participation and even remote voting. I want to park that for a moment, but it has prompted an all-moderator review and the expectation that moderators come to community meetings like this. I dare say, this is likely the first public airing of what I'm about to relate to the public at large, although I know there have been several private conversations between public officials and moderators over the last weeks. The spread of COVID-19 and the public health preventative measures exhibited worldwide and in some states that may yet be implemented in the coming months here at home, in my opinion, pose a genuine possibility that towns may be unable to hold town meeting. Let me repeat that. A genuine possibility that towns may be unable to hold town meeting. I'm not attempting to quantify the probability of it, I just know that it's more than zero. And every day, we see increasing circumstances in other countries, in our own country, around increasing cases, community transmission, and defensive and mitigation efforts that are being made. As a mad, as a prudent contingencies planning, I know that our town needs to be prepared. And I am decidedly not an alarmist, but rather seek to afford the comfort and the confidence about how our government, our collective government, would react as it pertains to the responsibilities that I have about the operations and conduct of town meeting as moderator. That leads me to wonder several things. Number one, we should be discussing what we're doing as a community, which I know we're doing generally, but specifically around town meeting contingency planning. Number two, the possibility that towns may be unable to actually hold statutorily required town meetings before June 30th is an exigent problem, and it extends well beyond my role as a moderator. It extends across municipality, your own responsibilities, other municipalities, the state legislature, the executive, et cetera. And I, as part of my association, the Massachusetts Moderators Association, are commencing working with the municipal, Massachusetts Municipal Association, two MMAs, two many of them, as a matter of fact, in order to put all the relevant stakeholders together so that we can put together best practices, contingent plans that can be applied generally but conducted specifically in the circumstance of particular towns. Number three, I thought it appropriate that we raised this issue specifically in our town to provide that heretofore confidence to our community that we're crafting, that we're beginning to craft guidance to inform and assist the community at large and our colleagues in other towns, because we'll learn from each other. Ours is a reasonably late-scheduled town meeting. Some town meetings are starting as early as next week, and those towns are reviewing in private and probably pretty soon in public the very discussion that we're having. Fourth, this may be the most important part, we need to seriously reflect on the legitimacy of town meeting in which a significant member of our community, of our resident populace, either cannot attend the meeting because they may be ill, or choose not to attend a meeting that they otherwise might have attended because of a real or even perceived judgment that they may be at some public health risk. Ensuring the credibility of our legislative process and that gathering whenever it takes place is truly paramount, which is why I believe we need to address all of the contingencies or some of the contingencies, in any case, that we might be able to predict. I suspect that whenever we hold town meeting, it's going to look very, very differently than what we've had in past town meetings. I've never before involved the board of public health and public health authorities in the planning of town meeting. You can be sure that that'll be part of our group this year as we plan whenever it is that we choose to conduct town meeting. I really do believe that the current coronavirus situation deserves immediate attention by me as moderator and obviously, as you've already demonstrated, as responsible public officials. But we now have a joint responsibility because of my obligations as the conductor, if you will, of town meeting and acting in concert with public health, public health advisories, local authorities, the state, and the CDC is sort of paramount. In conversation yesterday with the chair, and for folks at home, the members of the Board of Selectmen really do work 24/7. So thank you, Dick. It was suggested that the matter be raised today, and I thank you for that courtesy. I know that we wish to work collaboratively to address the contingencies of a possible public health crisis that could cripple town meeting and town services that are a consequence of town meeting. Imagine not having a town meeting, not being able to pass a budget, pay bills, do important zoning or other bylaw kind of work, all of the things that come out of our legislative meeting. I should share that the question of postponement of town meeting is somewhat covered, of a scheduled town meeting, that is, that somewhat is covered in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10A. And that allows a moderator to unilaterally, with the advice but not consent of a select board and public safety authorities, public health authorities are not specifically mentioned in the law, but certainly we would do that in this case, to unilaterally make the judgment to post town, postpone a town meeting that's scheduled for up to 30 days. And you alone of the party that can reschedule a town meeting beyond that 30-day point and/or schedule whenever you choose to do so. I respectfully ask that, that the town manager should put together a working group around town operations, specific, and I will cooperate with all parties in any circumstance that this board and the town manager chooses to put together, around the specific judgment consequential to town meeting, its actual scheduling and its conduct. So I'm very, very open to that, and I thank you for not only inviting me here, and I know that you'll welcome that participation. And the town clerks as well, who, as my partner relative to the beginning conduct, if you will, of the meeting is vital. Lastly, one thing's very clear, and that circumstances in our community or state may not allow local or state officials to act quickly enough to deal with a crisis of the moment, and we don't know when that moment might be presenting us. My advice, which town council can choose to affirm or not, and you as well, is number one, in the event of an emergency and without the benefit of state dispensation or guidance, that we act as necessary to protect the public first. Number two, do only that which is necessary to protect the public and continue government operations. Number three, conform to the law as closely and as prudently as the circumstance will allow. And lastly, we'll care for people now and clean up the form a little bit later. This board has had quite specific experience with crises. We can all remember September 13th and the explosions and at, around Columbia Gas. We may yet have an explosion of community transmission of COVID-19, and I pray that does not happen, but it is something about which we can affirmatively plan. I know the citizens of this community can count on you to help our community plan in a prudent way to address this truly pending pandemic. Any questions or concerns? I'm happy to walk through what other moderators, what other town councils have suggested that I'm aware of, and what contingent plans might be expressed.
So I just want to say, so, thank you, Mark, for the information. You know, I think, please note that we're not taking any votes tonight. This is not, you know, we're not doing anything tonight, no actions being taken tonight. This was just informational. I think we want to get ahead of this a little bit. We want to understand what the possible ramifications are if this does become much more or much more pronounced in our, in our town. So we want to make sure we stay ahead of it. So this was really an informational, I think, going forward, we're going to obviously work with the board of health and we're going to maintain our information and make sure we stay current with information so that we know and can make an informed decision going forward. But I thought it was important tonight to make sure that people are aware that, you know, of the potential risks that we have. So thank you for coming in tonight, and I'll open up to the board for any questions or comments.
Well, the first thing is that I think you hit on something very critical, which is we have experience in dealing with crisis. And, you know, the advan- And the, you know, the advantage of experience is that you've been through it, you've evaluated what worked, what we need to do, and we brought parties involved that last time we may not have as much forethought on. So being in a position now to draw on that, I think, is really important, and it puts us in a position where, no, we don't want to have another disaster, but the reality is there's always a possibility. This is slightly different nature, and being on the heels of Columbia Gas and that disaster is still fresh in our minds, and I think that's actually the one other strength that we probably have as a community, which is we've been through a crisis as a community and figured out how to work with our neighbors and how to, how to function as a community, businesses and, as I say, as neighbors. So, you know, this is, it's unfortunate to be in the situation, but I am pleased to see that we're having this conversation early and rationally and have these assets to draw on. So I appreciate, Dick, you having the conversation, and Melissa starting, and thank you, Mark.
We dealt with something similar, albeit on a much smaller scale, when we were discussing the Rock the Block party this past fall, and the threat of triple E came up, and there was a robust discussion among our committee about, you know, do we have it, do we not have it, is it prudent, and, you know, with public safety weighed in about the pros and the cons. I think the struggle that we had, and Rosemary and I were on those emails, was what exactly is that trigger, right? You know, what is it that, that, you know, there's always going to be detractors from whatever decision is made, so what's, what's that trigger? So I guess that would be my question for the moderator, it'd be my question for town staff. What is that trigger that would have us have, that would cause us to have more than just a conversation? Like, what is it that we're looking for? I mean, because that was the discussion that, and we fortunately didn't have to deal with the open meeting loss situation. We were able to just come, you know, informally to an agreement about, you know, let's postpone this event. So what is it that you're?
I'll share some of that. Among the triggers could be a state advisory that gatherings of, I'll make up a number, no more than 50 people, may take place in a public building, for instance, and the state has statutory, statutory authority, public health officials have that authority to demand that as a circumstance. We, in turn, could make a judgment that, yes, we can have parallel town meetings of 50 people, no more than 50 people, in 15 different spots. We have already proven through some of the innovations that we've experienced over the course of the last few years, that we can have remote participation, we can have distant participation, we can knit a group of series of community rooms together and actually conduct a town meeting. Might be a little bit clunky, will certainly tax our technology interest and the television interests that we have, but in fact, we could do that. Among others could be the circumstance of recognizing that we unilaterally make the judgment that this is more likely to get problematic later rather than earlier, and that we may choose to accelerate a town meeting to an earlier period of time. Or the other edge of the sword, to make town meeting as late in the June time period before the June 30th statutory deadline as possible. So those are circumstances that are in our control if we want to make a prudent hypothesis about what might be necessary. The game totally changes if we're in the circumstance of a community in which one of the folks from the Biogen Conference happened to live in North Andover, no evidence that that's the case right now, but if they did, we become a ground zero kind of play, and it accelerates the response that we ought to have guided by the public health authorities. We, in turn, in terms of government operations and the responsibilities of acting, actually conducting town meeting, will have to respond however it is that we think most prudent. So there are going to be all kinds of triggers. They may be statutory, they may be emergency authority kinds of triggers. I'm sure that the Mass, the Mass Moderators Association and the Mass Municipal Association are working right now. I know that they're working right now, relative to proposals that we've put on the table around the emergency circumstance of, can you operate on a 1/12 budget without ever having a town, have had a town meeting to begin with? Right now, we know DOR will allow a 1/12 budget, but it's after you've failed at creating a budget at a regularly scheduled town meeting prior to June 30th. If we don't have one, what happens? Do we schedule a town meeting to just do a smaller part of our business, say it's the most critical ones, set the budget, for instance, and then choose to deliberately postpone until another time? So there's all kinds of considerations that we can have. One of them will not be an exclusively virtual town meeting because there's no legal sanction to do that, albeit I would suspect, because we have the technology capacity to do that, perhaps an emergency executive authority might overrate that, override that, but that's well above my pay grade at the moment. But I know that if that were something that could happen, and that were our only consequence, that we could conduct that with some fairness.
Any other questions?
It'd be interesting just internally to see what, what we've done. I'm going to invoke Spanish flu again. You know, what did we do at a time when technology wasn't at our disposal? I'm sure laws have changed that limit or restrict how we hold town meetings since, but we're 400 years doing this form of government. It'd be interesting to know how we've handled that in the past and what other communities, I mean, Massachusetts experience, I mean, every town and city, right, not city, but every town here goes through it. What happened when, you know, a tornado touched down in Monson a few years ago? Like, what happened when individual communities, you know, like, for instance, what would have happened had Columbia Gas happened on May 13th instead of September 13th? Like, what, what do those communities do? That's actually probably the best, what would have happened had September 13th been May 13th?
Or even the floods that we had, we had the terrible floods, and with the floods, it was sore and rolling through the streets, and it's pretty dangerous stuff. But emergency management, the fire department, the police, they, they performed unbelievably then as well, and I have no doubt that our internal group would perform equally as well. God forbid that we get hit with this.
I'm going to ask, and I underline the personal reflection that you have as community leaders around the legitimacy question, because whether we have a town meeting, whenever we have a town meeting, at whatever time, if in fact there is a significant part of the community that believes it's not legitimate because they either chose to for their own health and safety, whether warranted or not, that's something that we need to be cognizant of. That's why the notion of providing, even in the conduct of a meeting involving the Board of Public Health, when do you wipe down the microphones? Should people not sit next to each other? Should we, in fact, conduct a disparate town meeting in the high school when we have four or five very large spaces instead of pulling, putting 800 people in one space, as an example? So all of those things, I'm interested in your advice as well as what is the most prudent kind of thing to do.
Yeah, and I think, again, thank you, you know, we definitely have to be ahead of this. I think tonight was a good information session. We now need to start talking about, you know, contingency plans if things start to accelerate in that. I mean, hopefully, this is going to, you know, go away. I'm being hopeful, but, you know, probably not the case, but, you know, we want to make sure that we're ahead of this and that we have some contingency plans, contingency plans in place to address it as it, you know, as it accelerates or if it accelerates, I should say. But as I said earlier, we're not taking any votes tonight, we're not taking any action tonight, this is just informational. I don't want to send a panic out that we're not going to have town meeting. We're just really trying to understand what we have in front of us and what are the best ways of addressing it, so.
Exactly. The headline is not, we're not going to have town meeting. The headline is that we may not have town meeting or be able to postpone it, but we'll have a plan to mitigate whatever consequence that happens to be. I thank you for listening. I appreciate it a great deal.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that you exercise your prerogative, and I think that somebody's here this evening from one of our appointed boards and committees to give a report, if I'm not mistaken, am I mistaken?
Okay, just, yeah, I will. Just before I close that out, I wanted, since Trudy was here, I wanted to see if she had anything to add with respect to community readiness for the coronavirus, since you came here tonight.
The only thing that's really crossed my mind is with the
I'm sorry, Trudy, you.
I'm sorry, Trudy Reed, town clerk. With the election four weeks away, the local election, it may be, emergency management may be coming in and wiping down the booths every hour, or we have more pens available or something like that. That's the only thing that's really crossed my mind. We made hand sanitizer available at the last election, maybe a couple more bottles here and there, but that's all that I've really have thought that much about it. Thanks.
And after the last election, the schools were thoroughly, thoroughly cleaned. They used the electromagnetic wands, yeah, something like that. They used the cleaning wands to desanitize the high school after we had obviously quite a few residents in it, and we'll make sure that that happens again after this election.
And before, right?
And before, yes, continually.
Because kids are in there, and a lot, a lot of our poll workers are seniors.
Right, so you want to make sure that we're continuing to, to make sure that everything's clean, so.
All right, well, thank you for all those updates tonight. I think it was all good information. So Phil, I will accept that request for an update on the Youth and Recreation Community Activities, and I'll move letter E up to the next item on our agenda. So who is here tonight?
I asked for that item to be on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which one we were asking?
Andy is welcome to make some comments as well. He came.
Well, let me back off then. I assume that was what was Phil referring to. What were you?
I have to pull up looking, because I figured this was one of the board updates, since it says, update from the Youth and Recreation Committee.
Okay.
Well, let me explain. Andy, if you would like to make a comment, we can have, I asked for this to be on the agenda because as we implemented these new roles of us having, being a liaison to different boards and committees, I've been attending the Youth and Rec Services committees, and I decided to say a few words about what's going on there. I guess I shouldn't have put it as a purple agenda item to make him feel he had to come. But since you're here, please, make some comments.
I was just feeling, I'm like, wow, he's going to be there for another hour.
I appreciate that. My name's Andrew Furman, 5 Crossbow Lane. I do chair the Youth and Recreation Committee. As part of my responsibilities as chair, I saw it was an agenda item, and just wanted to be here to listen and be part of the meeting if there are any questions the board has. But I don't have any updates for you. I'm happy to prepare an update for you at some point and come back at another time, but at this moment, I defer to the select board member.
I'm sorry.
Who is our chair?
For dragging you out.
You didn't drag me out. It's always a pleasure to come and participate in our local government.
I was just going to give a brief
We've been here before.
No, I know, I know, you do frequent our meetings, and I appreciate that. I, I feel like if we're going to be liaisons to different boards and committees, we should make a point of sharing some information from those boards and committees, so, shall I do that now? I only have a couple of words.
We're here, we're here. We're at the exit.
So, I mean, yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, first of all, I'm, I'm so excited to participate in these meetings and hear what these guys are doing is, I mean, our Youth and Rec Services Department is phenomenal. I know we all know that and say that on a regular basis, but Rick Gorman really has, has done amazing things there and continues to, and, and the committee certainly supports all that activity. Recently, for example, we talked in a recent meeting about the budget. They were very happy with the budget proposal. The budget that we've allocated to Youth and Rec Services will afford them to have some front desk support, which has currently, which has up until now been volunteers. I have actually served in that spot, so I think that'll be great. And what they don't get through the budget process, they do via fundraising, so one example of that would be the Brooks skating, and I would just share that that has been their best year ever, so that's great for anyone who's going to the Brooks skating nights on Sunday night, and as well, obviously, the huge event, which is the Night to Shine Auction Event, which is coming up, so I encourage everyone to go to that if they have the ability. Remind me of the date? I think it's a couple of days before the election, right, or something?
The end of March.
Yes, the end of March.
March 28th.
Thank you, March 28th.
March 28th, six to 10.
Thank you.
At DeBros.
At DeBros, yes. And then another point I just wanted to share, which is I think it's so great to see, I think I've talked about this a lot since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, is the collaboration that the Youth and Rec Services Group does with other groups within town. So just to give a couple of examples, there's collaboration with Stevens Estate, that's actually going to be the rain site for the children's shows in the summer, rather than the middle school auditorium, which I think is great since there's the tent. They're collaborating with the school department on making sure the summer programs can be inclusive of the special education students, which I think is really great. I know they did that last year, and they're continuing to do that. And collaboration even outside of the town with, for example, the YMCA, where there's going to be a dual membership opportunity, they're working with the YMCA to come up with a dual membership kind of deal, which I think is really great for the kids, especially maybe some high school kids who, for whatever reason, might think that the youth center, they were going all the time when they were in middle school, maybe they don't feel that they want to go anymore, but this is something that will get them back into the youth center. So that's just a few things. I just wanted to say a couple of words. I just think the committee's doing really great things, so.
And I'll take this opportunity to thank Regina as our liaison to your board, your board, as well as the Finance Committee, Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager for all your support that you do for the youth in town. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Let me suggest one, one thing. I happen to be down at NA CAM, and we're just kind of talking about, I mean, that's such an amazing facility there, and some of the shows they're doing, and I was just thinking that we have different groups, and Youth and Recreation is one that could really use its own platform for promotion, and maybe a thought to maybe put something together, not necessarily something too fancy, but let folks know, help get the message out there. They're eager to do this for different boards, different groups in town, so might encourage you to do that, because as many folks who are participating, the scope, a lot of folks still don't realize, and certainly the possibility of this Y connection is enormous for folks, so.
Absolutely, and we will discuss that. I do know Rick and his staff do the Youth Centered Podcast.
Yeah.
And I do know there have been some leverage and some collaboration with NA CAM, but to expand those programs is obviously, you know, if there's an opportunity there. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Rick and Demi and their whole staff. They're doing a phenomenal job for the kids in this town.
Thanks, Andy.
We're very fortunate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate your time tonight. Okay, I'm going to rewind back up to the top of government reports, and we'll take the first one, update on the senior center.
Great, so just wanted to give a quick update on where we are on the senior center. The town received four bids for the senior center construction. The lowest bid was for $7,907,462, and that included all of the first five alternates, which are the alternates that we need, and that's the food service equipment, the two-room partitions, the patio paving, and the emergency generator, with the soft costs, which include the architect, the owner's project manager, wiring for IT, and our furniture and fixtures. The total project costs are $9,445,993.50, so that's $9,445,993.50. This will all be going up on the town website. I'm exact. The town had previously appropriated, over a few different town meetings, a total of We had placed a placeholder in our capital budget for $2,500,000. We will be amending that capital request to increase that amount to $3 million. The funding source is still free cash, because we are trying to save bonding capacities for the Facilities Master Plan 2, which will be done around May 15th. And why is that amount more than originally thought? It's a few reasons. The number was based on the Facilities Master Plan 1, which was completed almost 10 years ago. That originally appropriated amount did not include inflation, so we used a number that was really not updated for today. Additionally, we have seen steel, the price of steel increased because of tariffs, et cetera, so there's been kind of a strange dynamic with the market. Also, that original plan did not account for furniture, fixtures, or other needs like that, including IT, which we're not accounting for, so that also would have caused kind of a price change as well. So I also just So I also just wanted to say that the Facilities Master Plan One contemplated many different ideas for the senior center. The one that I think the price was based on was actually a renovation and expansion on the current facility, so what we're actually building is quite different from what the Facilities Master Plan One contemplated, so it does make sense that that budget amount would not be accurate. So here we are. The good news is we have accurate bids, because we've gone out to bid, so we know that these are the real prices. We get the appropriation at town meeting, we'll be able to take action immediately, so we'll be able to sign a contract in the end of May, beginning of June, and get moving right away. So that's exciting. But again, we will be asking for $3 million at town meeting to offset the funding gap for the senior center construction.
So all of this is free cash, so there'll be no bonding?
We're not needing any bonding. We would like to save the bonding for the Facilities Master Plan.
Did you look at the, because the rates are so low, is there any benefit of maybe rethinking that?
We've looked at it.
I'm just tossing it out.
Yeah, we've looked at it. We have a policy where we try to keep our debt around 5%, which our bonding agencies look very favorably on. If we bond this and then continue to bond our future projects, we really would be at higher than 5% because we're at like 4.9 right now. Based on the analysis of what we're seeing from cash in the bank versus what the bonding rates are, I don't think it makes much of a difference, so.
So you don't, there's no benefit of, because the rates are so low, that they would, it doesn't necessarily have to be 5%, but maybe the money we spent is lower? They don't, they don't take that into consideration?
It would, it still would be around 3, 3.5. I mean, that's where our rates are right now. I know, it sounds, I, I know the mortgage conversation publicly is that mortgage rates are really low, but our, our rates are still hanging out around 3 to 3.5%. We have a good amount of free cash right now because we have, not because we've been generating a lot of free cash every year, because we've been turning our free cash over and over again as almost like a savings account. We'll still have a good amount of free cash after we do this year's expenditure, is to continue to roll over if that's the way that we want to operate, but we do think that free cash is the most prudent right now.
Okay. I just thought it would be a question that might come up.
No, it's a great question, yeah, and I'm sure it will.
Yeah, I, I would also, the other thing that, it's, it's counterintuitive, but actually, when rates get this low, there's a disincentive for lenders to actually lend money. It's not a good investment for them, because lending money at so low an interest rate, getting paid back, when the prospect of inflation likely is going to be much higher, there's really much more of a possibility of, of a squeeze, a temporary squeeze. So it's really not necessarily, as I say, it's a little counterintuitive, but that's why it's not always makes sense to jump in right now with a project like this. So again, I think that's another thing that I'm sure you weighed with this.
If we have bonded, some portions of this project are already, about 5.5 million, because we have had kind of various appropriations over multiple town meetings. That initial bond was already taken, so we have bonded some portions of it.
Okay, well, that seems to be a good
Yeah.
kind of compromise on the two different theories, so.
It's interesting, so. So that's where we are. It's just an update. We will be amending the capital plan. I will resubmit the capital plan to you, but the article will be a little bit different at town meetings, just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, on the website, do we have, I know we've gotten some, we have some nice comprehensive webpages to show the, the evolution of all these, of a lot of projects. Is the senior center one of them out there?
The senior center is the, the main one that we have, the best one we have right now.
Okay, but it goes back to history too, and talks about what was bonded and what was voted on in the press.
Timeline, history, and then what we'll do is we'll go ahead and add the kinds of want to hear it first, but then we'll add this next section on kind of explaining where the bids came in. I'm really glad we put the bid out when we did, because it is allowing us to give, to get these really concrete numbers, and I think that that's really important going to town meeting, asking for more money, that we have concrete numbers and we say we're not going to be back again, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you for that update.
No problem.
Next, we have an update on the Amazon project, up at $1,600. Good.
Okay, so I just want to give you a document.
Okay, so as you know, the town has been negotiating the past few months with Amazon regarding two items, the development agreement and a TIF agreement, so a tax incremental financing agreement. And Amazon has agreed to much of the routine language and the language surrounding kind of the sewer, the water improvements, the roadway improvements, truck traffic, construction mitigation, and the meat of what we've really been talking about has been this community partnership request and our, our TIF agreement request. And I just, I want to add that I think North Andover should be applauded, because we are the first community to attempt to negotiate a development agreement with Amazon in the country. So that, we're really kind of setting precedent with this, which I think may be why it's been kind of a, a long process, but I think that, that we should be applauded for doing that. Also, one thing that has changed as we've kind of gone through this process is that we had been always operating after the last town meeting, thinking that the project cost was around 300,000, and we now know that the total project cost is 300 million, so I can tell me this today, we now know the total project cost is more like 750 million between the construction and the lease. So obviously, this project has really increased in value a lot since the last town meeting, and a lot of that is because of the amount of work that's going into the site. So we've done a lot of back and forth about the community partnerships, and Amazon has certain causes that they're the most comfortable with supporting. And so if you look at the documents that I just gave you, and you go to the first page of the stapled document, the town made an initial offer to Amazon on a TIF last week, and we, we went in a little, I think probably on the low end. It was a 10-year TIF. They had been requesting 15 years. We had originally started at seven, and now we're at 10, and we're comfortable, the team, so the team that's been negotiating has been some people from the Board of Selectmen that you asked, and Andrew Shapiro, our Director of Economic and Community Development, and Town Council Suzanne Egan, so they're both here today as well. And so we made this initial offer, and basically, running through this top document, the current assessed value is $1,578,471. That's the land only, so we have a consultant on board right now, and assessing a consultant, and he's basically said that because the buildings are going to be demolished, you would not include them in your initial value, which makes sense. So in the total private investment for construction at this point is the $400 million number. And so the consultant has said to us that he estimates that the assessed value in year one will be $247,128. So if you look at that first block at the top, that's what that's running through, okay? And so we are looking at that estimated value, that's the $247,128, and we're keeping that stagnant here. We're not increasing it year per year, because that's what the state likes to see when you're doing these TIF analysis. So yes, that value will increase by the 2.5% every year in real life, but in this formula, you're seeing it remain stagnant. And the base taxes to be collected, the $29,249, that's based on the current value of that $1.5 million, okay? Okay. And so the estimated property taxes without a TIF in year one is the $4.5 million per year, okay? So what we had done was we had made an offer for a 10-year period that began with 0.6% exempted in the first two years, 0.5 exempted in the next two years, 0.4 exempted in the two years after that, then 0.3 for two years, then 0.10 for two years. And that would exempted a total of $17.3 million, right? And the town would have received $28 million under that scenario, over that 10-year period, okay? We knew that Amazon was really looking more for a $30 million number, based on the $750 million investment that they're making in the community, okay? So if you go to page two of this document, this is Amazon's counteroffer to us, and this document is linked to the chart that I gave you, okay? So Amazon is saying is that they would agree to these community partnerships, which I'm going to read aloud in a minute, in the TIF that was on page two, if they were combined together, okay? So they being agreeing in the development agreement to these community partnerships. A sewer contribution of $2.3 million, Mast Dot road contributions of approximately $2 million, a post-project traffic calming study of $100,000. So basically, our intent there is to say, after you come to full occupancy, will you please review the traffic? And Mast Dot is saying the same thing. Will you please review the traffic and make sure it is what you said it was going to be, okay? STEM funding for the schools, a total of $3 million with an annual $300,000 payment each year of the 10 years of the TIF. Annual Veterans Workforce Events, so basically an annual event where they would build jobs to veterans. It wouldn't just have to be Amazon, it could be other businesses as well, but it would be for veterans. $100,000 to the Library and Youth Services for Technology, $70,000 per year for tree planting in town, $100,000 for the senior center's furniture and technology, $100,000 for traffic mitigation equipment. So basically, we could buy things like signboards, traffic calming signs, et cetera, or equipment the police needed to do traffic mitigation, and then the fire equipment that the Fire Department has listed as needed, so that is a total of $263,000. It's mostly like hoses and other equipment that they need for that building specifically, yes. And so that is linked to the Amazon counter. And so the Amazon counter that you're looking at here, that's
What's the, the total on that?
On the Amazon counter? Oh, the total, I'm sorry. The total on the community partnership is $8,663,699. Okay, so that takes us back to the second stapled sheet. Again, our current assessed value is the $1.5 million. That's where we're starting from, that's our base. The total private investment has not changed, the estimated value has not changed, what the term of the TIF, the 10 years, has not changed. What's changed is the tax exemption rate, okay? So what we're doing here is three, four years at the 0.8, two years at 0.7, two years at 0.6, and two years at 0.4. So the total taxes exempted under the Amazon counter are $30,030,216, okay? So what we're showing you in the new net tax column on the side, right, the second to last column, is that over the 15-year period that we know Amazon would have this lease, the town would be collecting $38,220,275. And I also think it's important to show that while Amazon would be paying the 30, would be exempted the $30 million, it's more like $22 million, because we'd be getting all of these community benefits as well. And so I think that's an important part of the conversation to have. And so looking at it, the first year, they would be exempted $3.6 million, the town would get $910,000, and that continues to grow over the 10-year period, to a point where they are exempted $1.8 million, but paying $2.7 million. Also very important is that personal property is not included in this. It's only real estate taxes. We do not yet have an idea of what our personal property is valued at, because we have not seen what the robotics would be, but that's additional taxes paid to the town. Also, Orrie's property, so the parcels that are not owned by Amazon are not included in the TIF agreement, so those properties will continue to have taxes paid on them as well, okay? So now we're at kind of a point where we've received this offer, the counteroffer. It feels very strange we're talking about this all publicly, right? Because we're, but unfortunately, you can't discuss TIFs in an executive session, so we're here having this conversation, which I think is great, because town meeting's coming, and we're going to be discussing it there as well. The third page is kind of a, do we want to make a potential counteroffer? We had put it together, basically, it just takes $3 million of the tax exempted off and moves it over into the town side. So instead of the $30 million, the tax is exempted, it would be $27 million. We have not made this counteroffer to Amazon at all. The last thing that we received from them was this development agreement, community partnership, and the counter. So that's where we are right now.
First question I got is, or first thing that jumps to the front, is so this is front-loaded, basically, what Amazon is asking for.
We are the ones who are suggesting the shorter period of time, and there's a few reasons why. You want to finish first? Go ahead.
So, so what I'm saying, the exemption, Amazon wants the front-loaded exemption there, and they want a longer time period. So you, you get value over time as it appreciates and moves, but where is our exposure if, at year seven versus 10 versus 14, that they'll still be here and this will still be operating? Isn't that part of the calculation here?
So it's two parts. One, they're, they're entering into a 15-year lease, so that's a positive. And two, one of the things that, that our consultant has said, and that other people have said as well, is that the value of the building is still there, right? So they're investing all of this money in our community. They're investing that $400 million in construction in the community, and that building value still exists even if Amazon is not there. And so we'll always have that value, which is really important.
Which is paid by Hillwood.
Right, or another tenant, or whatever, however it ends up happening. But that value doesn't go away even if the company did, and I think that's kind of an important point.
I'd just like to correct something that you said, but it was just, I think the way you said it, that might be confusing to the public. The first thing you said, this, this is a low offer, not meaning that we're giving them
Right.
It's, I didn't want people to misconstrue that we're starting low.
No, I think what we started, you know, it's a negotiation. We have all negotiated and bought something in the past, right? You don't come in with your best offer, so we try, right?
Exactly. The word low, I didn't want the public to be confused that we're starting low. No, we're starting where we should be starting.
Right, yes.
And how long, is there a timetable as to how long this counteroffer from them is good till?
No, no, but you know, obviously, we need to get it on town meeting tomorrow, and I'm sure that they're breathlessly waiting to hear from us. And you know, one of the things I'll say is that they have a lot of projects in flux across the country, right? And this project has become a very expensive one, and so I think that they're watching it as an entire company really interestingly. One other thing that I wanted to share with you is that Amazon has, does have other TIFs in the Commonwealth, right? So they have a TIF with Fall River and with Freetown, and that, those are both 15-year TIFs, because that's how long the leases are there as well. And they invested $54 million in those communities, right? So $750 million are $400 million in construction versus $54 million. And in Fall River, they have a TIF with a value of $7.8 million, and I was hoping to get this on a slide, but we ran out of time today. And in Freetown, they have a TIF that has a value of $3.8 million. So between those two communities, they have $12 million in TIFs for $54 million, right? We're talking about a $30 million TIF for $400 million. And so, you know, I think numbers-wise, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, but percentage-wise, I think we're doing pretty well.
But also too, that you don't talk about in this agreement, because it isn't really officially part of this agreement, is when you have a project like this and the jobs, that the money that grows the town, spreading out from the location, and frankly, Mary McValley, is not reflected in this document, so it's still a lot of money that will come to North Andover and the region beyond what's in this agreement.
1,500 jobs would be confirmed in the TIF document. So our next step after confirming with you the direction you want to go, will be starting, working with the state and with Andrew and Suzanne on drafting the actual TIF agreement in the documents and memorializing the 1,500 jobs.
I think one of the more disappointing things about this is, right, everybody, it's not too dissimilar from marijuana, where everybody talked about numbers, and it was the case at this town meeting, where, I mean, even if you go back to headlines, there's a discussion about the 3.5 to 4.5 million dollars in tax revenue that would be generated by this property, and there wasn't this discussion. And I know that, you know, we're not Fall River, we're not a city council that approves this, this is voters that go to town meeting and are allowed to weigh in, and they're the ones that first approved these zoning changes, so I, I think it's too bad that this wasn't part of that conversation, just the concept from the beginning, because, I mean, granted, yes, even under their counteroffer, we're still looking at approximately, almost, right, a million dollars more a year in new revenue for those first five years, but I'm going to quote our former town manager, you know, who always used to say, underpromise and overdeliver, and I think that that would naturally be a question from, and by the way, Madam Town Manager, that's not a reflection, you weren't here when they came for us in June, but I think that that's, it's too bad that that also, or this, rather, the concept overall couldn't have been part of the conversation. Now, that being said, I think that you've made a great point, that this is far more generous than what they've done in other communities, and I think it's great that they have, over the course of their time here, you know, committed this additional funding for projects that all too often end up landing on the back burner, and quite possibly would land on the back burner if it was roped in or enveloped into the overall budget, but I just think that from a residence perspective, that were to get up there, I think that they'd go up and, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be unfair for them to ask the questions about why wasn't this part of the conversation from the beginning, when?
Fair question, and unfortunately, it wasn't. You know, it wasn't brought up to us, and it was not discussed at all, and then, and then it was, it was launched. And then, and then it was, it was launched.
And I do think, by the way, if they came to us and said, hey, we're going to give you a project that's going to generate an extra million dollars a year in tax revenue, or nine hundred and ten thousand, you know, for the next five years, and then, oh, by the way, that's going to jump. I think that the town would have been just as open to it. I just think that that's...
And, and the money that comes from a project with that magnitude in town. I do have to say, I really, I really like some of the projects that they've taken to contribute to the town. I think there's some of, everybody in this room, some of our favorites are on that list. You know, whether it be the STEM program, or for me, I've always been advocating for more trees in town and, and the robotics, but all kinds of great stuff. Veterans, I mean, this is, they seem to touch upon some of what the town has expressed interest in, so. And that tells me that they're paying attention somewhere. And then, of course, with your leadership also promoting these as well. So that's kind of an interesting side note to this agreement.
And it keeps within their, you know, their corporate guidance, like they're interested in technology. So you see they've got the STEM, which is a phenomenal investment in our students, and then the senior center, and then they're also environmental, so the trees, seventy thousand dollars per year for trees. We can do a lot with that.
A million dollars over ten years, almost, in tree money, so.
Yeah, so we can do a lot with that. And then the fire mitigation and the traffic mitigation and fire equipment, so yeah, they've kind of touched on everything.
Well, they had to do the fire truck because we need the equipment to take care of that building.
And the sewer as well.
But it's all, it's all good assets. But I think the big thing is that, and I don't disagree with what you said. It did come as something of a surprise, but at the end of the day, it is still more money than that building is generating. And I think, as you said, under any circumstances, the town would probably just be very excited and embrace it. Little disappointing, we have to wait for some of more of our money as it, as time goes on. But more money that we were hoping for, but it's still...
More money that was told, it wasn't, it was an empty hope if we were talking about it. I mean, it's because that was, you go back to headlines and that was numbers that they threw out, or representatives. I shouldn't say that because in fairness, that wasn't Amazon that threw them out. It was representatives of the company that was going to develop and attract them. And so, again, this isn't a community that, you know, we as elected officials get to weigh these options and have, have that discussion at, at that level. I mean, you're negotiating with the whole community, you're not negotiating with just the five of us. I did have a question though about, about this piece, the additional funds that they're giving. At one point, I know that there was a, it was floated the concept. I could have even just missed it as I was scrolling through just to check my own notes about the discussions we had last spring. But there was discussion at one point after you had come on about whether or not purchasing certain conservation restrictions was an option on that corridor and there...
They've come back, they, so off of what the chair was saying, they have certain causes that they are willing to donate towards, and these are in line with those. So there's other offers that we've made during the negotiation period that were rejected.
Okay. I think that that's important. I mean, we, we as a board, you as town administration have been thinking about, well, how do we mitigate the impact on that? Because there's a whole neighborhood that lives back there, right? Several hundred residents, and I think that may even be conservative to say, live right off of 125 over there. And so, right, the conversation about, you know, there's Barker Farm right there. How do we help support that, that property so that it continues to be America's oldest farm?
Something we can maybe work on.
Is there, in your negotiations, is there an element of value to speed or timing that would be advantageous to have in the discussion for them?
You mean for them to be able to move faster through the process?
Faster.
They're actually fairly close to being done. They have the fire variance and the finalization of the planning board. The planning board, I think, could be as early as April or May. Andrew's nodding at me, so I think I'm right. And for the fire variance, that's a state variance. And so they are doing some final work with their reviewer, our peer reviewer, to make certain that the fire chief is satisfied and the building inspector are satisfied. But that, you know, they've been working very collaboratively on that. So I, you know, I think they've actually had a fairly streamlined process due to the zoning changes that we've made. So it's been relatively positive for them.
So that's, although it's a negotiating point, it's a cooperation point, which is a value stake, okay?
Yeah, they have submitted very appropriate and complete filings, which have helped. And I think the team has been very willing to work with them. And so it's been a very good relationship.
How much, how much tax revenues are already generated by that, the property that they're...
We just had this conversation. So it's a little hard to tell. I could tell you the tax revenue for the entire property, I think. But it's, it's hard because of they haven't subdivided the parcels yet. And so we, we've been talking about this, I'm just opening it back up. Because you remember, we get the, we get the host community pilot payment for the solar, which is eighty-four thousand right now, which I envisioned we would still get once it was moved. So that's a payment we would still get. We've done a bunch of analysis on this to see if we can kind of figure it out, and it's been hard. Can I get back to you on that number?
Sure.
Okay. I don't want to misspeak. Funny, we just had this conversation a couple hours ago. It's hard to, it's hard to tell because what we've been doing basically is the buildings that currently exist will be, some of them will be leaving. And then we only want to include the land on the TIF. That's the land that's under the actual Amazon building. So that has required us to kind of do like a division of the acreage. And so it's been a little bit of a complicated calculation. But our assessor consultant is here tomorrow, so I can touch base with him and make sure I have a solid number.
And so, you know, the reason why I'm asking is just even, say, we go with Amazon's counter offer, just understanding what that nine hundred and ten thousand dollars really means. Because you can easily see how conversations evolve, where, or devolve perhaps in certain situations where, well, we have an extra nine hundred thousand dollars to work with, but that, that may, and perhaps, probably isn't necessarily true because, of course, part of that nine hundred and ten thousand dollars is represented by existing taxes that are already paid. So that's not a net.
But you're getting eight hundred, but you're getting eight hundred thousand of value every year. So if you're, if we're going to do hypothetical math, right? The other part of the hypothetical math is the upfront piece plus some measure of what the property is in there. So I mean, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to do that exercise, you know, all I would say is, let's try and include as many factors in that exercise, knowing that the one best starting point is what we're collecting now. So I think giving people some sense of that, the total, I think would be important.
And then the personal property.
That's what I'm saying, all that.
You had said that. And then the fifteen hundred jobs and just the growth.
Here's me the, the now, because that's an important, the jobs are an important piece, but that's...
Tax, the tax piece.
What we lived through this past winter, right? We had a slight disagreement about where to land with what the schools could be given and what we given and what we would end up settling on. And we were able to close that gap. But, you know, there were clearly people who felt like, well, we're getting X number of jobs. There were people who were already, in their minds, spending Amazon money that obviously wasn't here for this year, right? And they were thinking down the road, well, we could spend X or we could spend Y, but we don't know what X or Y really is. And the numbers we were working with were based off of what limited numbers were put out there, which were clearly, again, assuming we accept their counter offer, or assuming they accepted our initial offer. Which we typically do if you counter.
And then the building permit.
Right, and the building permit, and it's also really, it's additionally difficult for me to answer your question because, remember that we had the TIF on that property up until last year, right? And then that property was valued, and now that property's at the appellate tax board. So that kind of makes it addition, so we, we put a value on it, which they're now paying. So for me to kind of figure, I'm going to do my best to get you an answer. There's five parcels there, or five different tax bills that that property gets. But the answer today could be different after that ATP case is finalized.
And that's, I think that's important too for the public to understand that, to hear what you just said, which is that it's constantly...
Changing.
There are a number, yeah, but there are a number of factors though that go into it. To your point, like nobly. And so that's why I just, I think it's important, right, to say, because again, we are a town. We're not a city that an elected city council gets to say, this is how we spend money. We have a town meeting. And I think, again, we saw it kind of get out of control and pass debates where let's spend money that we don't necessarily have yet. And so that's just, I guess I was trying to just temper, temper expectations then based on the information that we have in front of us right now so that it's, we don't fight over things that we don't literally have.
Right. Sorry, I'm doing math, see if I can figure it out, but...
You don't have to do it right now. I just, fortunately, started really...
I hate not being able to answer your question, it kills me.
It's a first, and that's okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, so what's the next step?
Just some direction. Do we want to make the counter offer? Or do we want to agree to the offer, the counter that they've made?
Personally, I think I would like for staff in the committee to ponder over it a little bit more and then get back to us. I would hate, I don't think we, unless you're advising me very strongly, otherwise, I think we should still think about it and think about some ways that we continue to work the deal, so.
Okay. So I mean, I can get back to them, wait two weeks.
Consider the counter offer and maybe, I mean, our own counter offer back.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
Would it be helpful to help?
The only hurry...
There should be no hurry in just accepting this tonight.
Right. The only hurry is that I need to put a warrant article on. That's kind of the crux of our issue, right? And the warrant closes your next meeting, before your next meeting, right? It closes on 23rd at 4:30, and you meet 23rd at 7:00. And so, right, so that's kind of our, our only final issue is that I just need to put a warrant article on.
Is it possible to meet next Monday, to have this be the topic, because a week too long?
I know, I think that's a great idea.
Because you're saying that you need our collective consent.
I would like, yes, I, well, it's, you know, I like your direction. I think it's really important that we're all working on this collaboratively, right?
But requires that open meeting.
Yes, and so I'd be more than happy to meet. It looks like he wants to say something. No, you're good? Okay. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or I'm missing anything.
Unless from a negotiating standpoint, they just, they need to hear sooner, but I, I think that we kind of have to...
I have, I have a meeting on Monday.
Between now and next Monday?
I could do Wednesday or Thursday.
Next Monday or Thursday?
Sorry.
Or even...
Just let us, just pull the board...
We'll send some times and get everybody together next week.
But I think it's important to, for the people at home to know that we are still doing our due diligence instead of this totally...
No, I agree. This is the first time that the board as a whole has seen all of these documents, right? So we certainly could meet next week. Again, I think that's a great idea.
All right, so let's consider maybe Wednesday, or we just have to put the posting out. Okay, so Monday's not going to happen, but maybe Wednesday or Thursday. All right. Moving on, we have an update on Columbia Gas.
Okay. This will be quick. Sorry, my papers are everywhere, so I'm just going to get back to my notes here. And so this is just a quick reminder for folks that there have been some changes with Columbia Gas, and I want to make sure that the public does know that. And so we have received notice that Columbia Gas has resolved the criminal investigation into the Merrimack Valley incident by pleading guilty and agreeing to pay fines. They then announced the sale of Columbia Gas to Eversource, and that sale is pending approvals from the DPU. Eversource is acquiring all the assets of Columbia Gas as well as its affiliates. They have told us they do plan to retain many of the employees. And so we're continuing business as usual, having construction meetings, et cetera, getting ready for the spring. Eversource is not assuming any of the liabilities of Columbia Gas that are resulting from any of the claims or fines, and the purchase price was one point one billion dollars.
So does that mean there's, what's the impact to citizens who had any kind of claims and all this?
So Columbia Gas will still be processing all of those claims and paying any fines or anything else. Eversource has not taken responsibility for any of the liability relating from the incident. So if there's settlements that come out, those will all be paid from Columbia Gas's assets. So basically, we're continuing business as usual with Columbia Gas right now and just waiting to hear from DPU, which they're saying will be sometime in the spring to finalize that purchase. And so we have heard from Eversource, they've called, introduced themselves, I've worked with them in the past, and let us know that, you know, they're going to be available. And so we're looking forward to a good relationship and hopefully some more smooth sailing than we've had.
Any other comments or questions, town manager? All right, well, that was a lot of government reports. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move to the approval of the minutes from February 24th, 2020, open session. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review those. Okay, so we have a motion for approval, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed? And it's approved. All right, so we're going to move to new business. First is the appointment of BCK Law as Special Counsel for Energy Issues. Madam Town Manager, you want to give us a brief update on that?
Sure. So as the board knows, we have received notice from DPU that there may be some issues with the solar farm that's located on 1600 Osgood. There is some requirements, because we are the host community, for us to do some filings that are due in April. BCK Law is a law firm that specializes in, in solar and in energy generally. I use them in a past community for citing board issues. They do a lot of work at the DPU. So I would like to retain them to work on this for us.
As I've said in the past, there's no one attorney that can be a master of all the different fields that there is in law. So I think it's always good for all of us to keep our eyes open where we want the very best. But again, with no due respect to town council, there's a lot of different laws out there and a lot of different practices, so I think it's a good idea.
And she'll be working, yeah, she'll be working closely with them, which is great. We had our first call, just a preliminary call today to review the documents we have so far. And she's been great at collecting everything in the world. Because you can imagine that, you know, over time, there's been, there's been many documents that exist related to the solar farm.
Well, it usually is a partnership between town council and outside council.
And so, just so you know, the firm billing their municipal rate is 350 an hour for the principal and 290 an hour for the associate. The associate is, is excellent and...
How smart is the associate?
She's very good, and she'd be working closely with us, I think mostly on the case, so.
Do we have an estimate on how many hours they would be involved?
We do not. We cannot provide a definitive estimate of time. But no, they, they said they didn't think it would be so huge. But obviously, it would include the review of all of our current documents, discussion of what we would need to do, the drafting and filing of the petitions that we need to do, et cetera, so. Sometimes I think you have to spend money to make sure that we retain our rights to receive the money that we receive. We do receive two payments through that solar array. We have an eighty-four thousand dollar host community agreement and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in credits. So it is very impactful to our budget.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen appoint BCK Law as Special Counsel through December 30th, 2020.
Any further discussion, a motion in a second? Uh, fair?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll have a discussion on the town meeting warrant. So we're not actually voting up or down on these, are we?
That's what you need to do today. All we're, it's just completely informational and just a request from me. So we have some warrant articles in your packet that have already been handed in. Remember, this year, we're doing things a little bit differently. The warrant's open until 4:30 on the 23rd. Warrant articles are coming in slowly. We've received two, three citizen petitions and then a handful of other routine-type articles. Sustainability Committee is voting tonight on whether or not to submit the bag man. They're submitting that from their committee. I plan on submitting, obviously, the TIF, the acquisition of the senior center parcel along with the regular routine business. Y'all accept the warrant at your next meeting and then hear the articles and take positions on them at the April, the first meeting in April. And so things are moving around along very quickly. All I'm really looking for is just authorization from you to submit articles on your behalf if necessary. So those two, and then anything else that might come up. So if we have like an emergency come up that we can't meet, for me to ask your permission, I'd just like to make sure that you're okay with me submitting them.
So you would submit them as being submitted from the board?
Right. There's some that would come up that I would submit directly from myself, but something like the TIF or the acquisition of the senior center parcel, I would likely submit from the board. Like you would want the TIF to come from you, right? I would think.
I would think so, yes.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Town Manager Rodriguez to submit town meeting warrant articles on behalf of the Board of Selectmen if necessary.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You look like you've got something. No?
I'm going to say aye when you call it.
Oh, is it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wow. Okay. All right, next we have a discussion of a potential article regarding changing the name of the Board of Selectmen to reflect gender-neutral language. So I believe...
I raised this, yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. I raised this item for our discussion tonight for several reasons. Number one, I just think it's time for a change because we are not, after all, a board of selected men as it was when our town was founded. We are a board of selected men and women. And hopefully, there will continue to be both men and women on this board. This proposal to some might feel like a big change, but it's actually a small change, a small but powerful change by just changing a few words. a small but powerful change by just changing a few words. So much of what we bring to the floor of town meeting and ask our citizens to consider, take months and months of preparation, working with various departments and boards, doing research, doing negotiations, developing proposals, weighing benefits versus negative impacts, navigating procurement processes, et cetera. This does not require any of that. It's a simple word change. And most importantly, this is a change with no negative impact that I can see, but a huge positive impact, which is to make clear that a man or a woman can be selected to be on the leading governing body for the, for North Andover, and that we are a community that values equality and expects diversity on this important board. So in my opinion, there is just no reason not to do this, to do this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think it's great. Words, words matter. We know this in the community, right? We have a reprise all the time about "raise" and why that word is so important to this community, and it's about inclusion, service, empathy, and this is just another way that we carry that through. And I thank you, yes. It's, it's a simple thing, but it's important, so appreciate that.
I actually think we're the only board in town that still uses the language. In every other, we don't have school committee, man, we have school committee, and et cetera, et cetera. So I think we're the only board that continues to, to use the language, so, I mean, I, I have no objections to it. As you said, I don't see a downside, other than I'll have to have all my signs reprinted.
Yeah, sorry to all those who run for the office with the sign printing.
But other than that, I don't have any objections to it.
For someone who has sat on this board for a while, town was founded in 1646, I am number three. What number are you? The third woman selectman in the town.
I think it's number seven.
I think, I thought, I thought I was doing my counting right. For me, I never felt offended by being called selectman, selectwoman, selectperson. I didn't see it probably with the way that others see it. I do respect that others might feel differently, but for me, I, I'm not crazy about select board. It's sort of an awkward phrase. It's sort of almost, you know, a little bit, you know, lofty that we're the select board. But again, with respect to all of my colleagues and, and the women colleagues, that now and in future who take this seat, I respect their, their feelings. For me, it's not as important it is perhaps to you or even other, other women and men. But as I've said, I've been, it's an honor to sit on this board and who have had the title selectman, and anybody can call me whether, whether they want to be selectman, selectperson, you know, selectwoman, and I'm not, I'm not particularly offended. But at the end of the day, I think all of you that know me, I'm a big supporter in the decisions of town meeting and would respect what town meeting chooses, and I would respect any other woman to be called what they choose to be called, whether the vote goes that way or not at town meeting. And it's not a matter of disrespect, it's just, I'm comfortable with whatever they call me, as long as it's done with a measure of respect for those of us who hold office, meaning, again, whether it be selectman, selectwoman, selectperson. So I, I lodge you for bringing forth your, what you feel that is important, but I've been honored to sit on this board and regardless of the title, and thank those who have voted me in, so I think that's sort of a compromise of, of our ideas, and we'll let the people decide, and I have a pretty good idea which way they're going to decide on this one, and I'm okay with that.
So I, I don't see a vote on the agenda tonight. Was the intent a vote?
The intent was just to understand if you wanted to have a article on the board's behalf. You can certainly vote, you don't have to have to say vote.
I was asking for this to be sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, like, on the.
Okay.
On the warrant, rather than doing a citizen petition. I can certainly do a citizen petition. I know I can get 10 signatures in.
Sure.
No time, so.
Probably there are motions in this room, I would imagine.
Really, yes, exactly, so.
So, okay, well, would you like to make a motion? Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You can make a motion, doesn't matter. Sorry. No, you can certainly make a motion.
Um, so I will move, no. I will move that we, the Board of Selectmen, right, include a warrant article in the town meeting to change the name of Board of Selectmen to reflect gender-neutral language. Using the language provided in our packet. There was a, sorry, I should have read that as opening gambit, I guess. There was a proposal of the language. I can read it briefly, just so everyone knows what it is. Sorry about that. To see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general court to adopt legislation amending chapter X of the Acts of, X will fill in the numbers, the Town of North Andover Charter to reflect general neutral, gender-neutral terminology with reference to the Board of Selectmen, to be replaced with references to the select board and other appropriate gender-neutral revisions, and further that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill or take any other action related thereto. This requires a two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote, okay. So that is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'm opposed, but again, not opposed to the respect that it, we want the titles to show towards, towards women and men. I'm just comfortable with the way it is, but I'm more than happy to let the good people of North Andover decide what's comfortable for them.
Thank you. All right. And let's see, we have no licensing issues tonight, old business, nothing under old business. Town managers report, the job vacancy log, any comments?
Really no changes to the job vacancy log. I feel like I got all my reports out. I'm feeling very spent, no. Really no changes to the job vacancy log right now. We do have a few events coming up in town, so on March 29th, we have the rededication of the Vietnam Memorial, which we hope people will attend. That's from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. On March 22nd, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the wedding expo at the Stevens Estate. There's, I think, 35 vendors who are going to be at that, wedding vendors, and we're very excited about that. I think it's a great event for the Stevens Estate, and I believe those are the two big ones.
Is there an entry fee for that?
For the wedding expo, no.
No, it's okay.
No, so please encourage any brides, grooms, other people who are just interested in having events at the Stevens Estate to come. There's going to be lots of caterers, giving out food, so we hope people will come by and see all the different vendors. Yep.
And, and just rewinding a little bit to the veteran, the Vietnam Memorial rededication, when, what is the date on that?
So that is on, on March 29th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. behind North Andover High School.
Okay, and there'll be a program coming out? I'm assuming the.
Yeah, so there is a.
Patriotic Observance Committee is on top of that?
It was the night we had, at the, for the firefighters and police, so, yes, I'm sure, they're very good.
Yeah.
It's, it's a great group, and they'll, they'll make it a very.
Yeah, I hope.
A very nice event.
I hope a lot of people, the public, can make it, then.
Yeah. It's, you know, is, when we first dedicated that spot, it was in a very emotional time, because of course, as we all know, the Vietnam veterans were often forgotten, and these people that came, they lost their sons, and it was very, very emotional. So it'd be really nice to have a good turnout again. It meant a lot to the families.
Anything else? Town manager?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. So we'll go around, selectmen updates, comments? Just a bit to shout them out, or?
I think it was really exciting to see the Exchange Club honor yet again a great representation of our public safety department, and so I know most of us were able to attend. I just want to do a shout out, and this is a little puff-up for us as a community, that consistently our town staff and our select board show up to support our public safety, which is just a small, small fraction of the times they show up to support our community. And it just, when you look at how communities turn out to support their public safety officials, I think North Andover does a pretty damn good job, actually. So I thought it was a really nice opportunity to see, again, those, those instances where both police and fire, where they stand out in ways that aren't always above the fold on the front page, right? And they're acknowledged for being just that, that exceptional, so anyways, I think that's an important point.
Anyone else?
No, I, it's a little, something a little bit different than what I usually do, but it came to our attention, and probably some of the people in this room know, that it's the North Andover Middle School has what's called the Knights Closet, and I was really not aware of what that is. The North Andover Women's Club did make a donation to the Knights Closet, but what the Knights Closet is, they have for, for kids who, for, because of financial needs, don't really have terrific clothes to wear to school, or something were to happen, and they, and they can go to, with the utmost of privacy, through the help of staff and the staff who formed this great closet, they can go and get some clothes, so they can feel pretty good about themselves. Because if your kids aren't feeling great about themselves, it's going to be hard for them to perform well, choose good habits and activities and friends, stay out of drugs, and when this was brought to our attention about this organization, we were quite happy to make a donation, so the staff goes and they buy generally what these kids want and like. But I just wanted to put it out there that if you're looking for a cause to make kids feel pretty good about themselves, who might not feel so good because of financial concerns, they've got this great program, and, and it's the North Andover Middle School's Knights, like Scarlet Knights Closet. So I just thought I would share that, because I don't think a lot of people knew about it, and it's, I think it's pretty nifty. It's similar to the program that former, I'll say selectman tonight until this changed, selectman Watson started with the sporting program for kids who could not afford the equipment, and as a result, they didn't go out for sports. And there's only one chance at middle school or high school to be part of a group and experience that great high school experience, form good friendships, stay out of trouble, stay away from drugs, and it's kind of this, but it's with clothes. And I just wanted to share that it's out there for anybody who's interested in making a donation. They'll take any amount, and they were thrilled to get our donation from the Women's Club, so I would share that.
Other comments? Okay. Our next scheduled meeting is March 23rd, 2020, so I will hear a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
With second? All in favor?
Aye.